Well, there's a time delay so we can edit out Schultz's jokes. She asked if the thing was live and I said, "Time delay so we can bleep your jokes."
Bleep.
Well, you have to do it live. I can always shut this off.
Good point. Okay, are you on, Kelly?
I am.
About fifteen seconds.
I can see that. I can't see the bottom very well.
No, is it clear?
Good evening, Washington courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Time for our first regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Hawke will offer the invocation and Mr. Schultz will lead us in the pledge. Stand, please.
Tonight I will read my prayer. I usually shoot from the hip, but this is a welcome. Lord God, our heavenly Father, we ask that your ears be attentive to the prayers of your people on behalf of President Donald Trump as we lift up our petitions in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Give him your strength and help him, uphold him with your righteous right hand, protect him from the schemes of those who seek to take his life and all those who seek to subvert this foundation of godly government. Let those who are angry with him for unjust cause be put to shame and let no instrument or plan of wickedness formed against him succeed. Deliver him from all evil, be his refuge and fortress, and may your faithfulness be a shield to him. May the president ask for and be granted heavenly wisdom instead of that which is earthly, natural, or demonic. May his purposes be made clear by the advice of a multitude of wise counselors. Cause him to trust in you with all his heart and not rely on his own understanding. As he acknowledges you, make his path straight. May he realize that our nation's self comes from the Lord, who made heaven and earth. Give our president your judgments, O Lord, and may he direct our nation with righteousness. May he lead our government in doing what is good in your sight and lead the government in punishing what is wicked in your eyes. Almighty God, we confess our own sins and the sins of our nation, for we have disobeyed you and done what is evil in your sight. Yet we know you are rich in mercy. We know that it is your desire that all men, women, and children be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. We pray that our nation returns to you, that we might live tranquil and quiet lives in all godliness and dignity. For righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a disgrace to those who practice it. By your grace, may we be blessed to be a nation whose God is the Lord. Amen.
Amen. You give the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Kelly.
Johnson?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Blair?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Christman?
Here.
Hawke?
Here.
Lynch?
Here. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. I didn't see anything, but did anybody else? And if not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept it as read second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have two council committees to report this evening. The first is economic strategies and cooperation. That would be Mr. Johnson's committee. Go ahead with your chartreuse paper.
Thank you. The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth at five thirty P M. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mr. Ted Hawke, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director; Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief; Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney; Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager; and Mrs. Kristi Bowers, Chamber of Commerce president. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The committee noted there were forty-one open projects. Number two, Mrs. Baker advised the committee that the B R and E meetings were being scheduled with D D C. Number three, the committee noted the status of various business development projects within the downtown area. Mrs. Baker noted vinyl copies grand opening at their new locate- at their new location was planned for June first, twenty twenty-five. Number four, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Number five, the administration advised the committee of continued work with Small Nation. Number six, the administration advised the committee of continued work regarding the community reinvestment area. Number seven, the administration advised that the committee that discussions continue for the pavilion project. Number eight, Mrs. Baker noted an upcoming business project by Mr. Pennwell's class. Number nine, the committee was advised that funding had been approved for a mural to be painted on a downtown business. Number ten, the administration was advised a new local liaison for Honda had been hired for Mr. Reed's open position. Number eleven, the administration noted that the groundbreaking event for the Adena Hospital would be held in June. Number twelve, the committee noted that a new professional workshop would be held at the end of March. Mrs. Baker noted that the workshop's goal was to target young professionals. Number thirteen, Mrs. Baker noted that she had attended the annual D D C conference, regional partner event, with Kate Wells from O S U Extension. Number fourteen, Mrs. Baker noted that all-inclusive playground equipment outreach continued. I respectfully submitted myself and Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions, comments for that report?
Number seven, the administration advised the committee discussion continuing the pavilion project. Is there any location we have to answer that?
We're looking into it.
They have a location and there's a cooperative individual, but he's asked.
Looking into those, looking into them.
Would someone mind to make a motion to accept that report?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the economic strategies and cooperation report.
Thank you. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next, we have finance and personnel. Mr. Christman, you get the St. Patrick's paper.
Thank you. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member; Mr. Ted Hawke, is he on here? Council member. Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief; Mr. Ron Sockman, finance director; Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney; and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report on the statement of cash for the month ending January twenty twenty-five. Number two, the committee benefited from a report on investments of the City of Washington courthouse. Number three, the committee benefited from a review of the healthcare cost summary. Number four, the administration advised the committee that letters have been sent to residents regarding the electrical aggregation. Is it that? I never forget. Is it aggregation or aggravation?
A bit of both.
Contract rate of point zero eight three nine per kilowatt hour through May of twenty twenty-six. Number five, the administration benefited from a review of financial structures regarding C R A districts and expansion options. Number six, the administration noted that contract negotiations for the police department had begun. Number seven, the administration advised the committee of the transfer of property owned by the city to the C I C for development purposes. Number eight, the committee noted that conversations continue with Forester- Forestar Development Company regarding the granite property. Respectfully submitted by mainly by Mrs. Kelly Ford.
Thank you, Ms. Christman. And do we have any questions about that?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman, on number four. Usually don't we get more than a one-year contract on the rates?
Yeah, usually we do, Jim, but this time around, that twelve months appeared to be the most attractive thing to do. There's a lot of fluctuation in that market right now. So, the point zero eight three nine appeared to be the logical thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any others? Someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept it as read second.
And roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. In our reports, Mr. Denon, you are first. Thank you.
You know, I don't know if they've ever had the Chamber of Commerce president come back, you know, to the second meeting.
And I see, we also go back there, we have a granddaughter of mine. Rookie, little rookies here. Rookie, she loves.
Lovely leader of the downtown. But that-
Granddaughter.
They had, speaking of that, Meister Faye had a very nice pre-organizational meeting and very pleasant. You got a very nice motivated group of people there that are going to do wonderful things. New legislation, you have two pieces, but they relate to the same issue. Which if you're interested in why it's done that way, you can plumb the depths of Mark Pittsick's legal mind. But that is the tax issue. It does not increase taxes at all. It is the question of do you want to maintain that point? Well, two-tenths of a percent. And allow it to be used for capital improvement items like paving, park equipment, those type of uses. So it would maintain the current tax rate that you have. It does not increase that. But you do have to pass a, oh, an ordinance and then a resolution. And Mark can explain to you in great detail about the theory of why you do it that way. You know, really, that fits in with, you know, you've got kind of three themes that we work on. It's sustainable growth, economic resilience, and quality of life. I mean, that's what you folks have traditionally focused on. Now, within those three broad themes, there's a lot of variation, different opinions, and debate about which is the area to focus on. But generally, it has been those three broad concepts. And we're very happy to be able to bring you folks and the residents of Washington courthouse that opportunity because again, this is something that people get to vote on. Also, it still only applies to basically earned income. You know, retirement income, like social security, is not taxed. You could have some folks where mostly the income's retirement, but if they get a little bit of rental income, that's taxable income. But fifty, if you took an income of fifty thousand dollars, that's taxable to City Washington courthouse and you applied two-tenths percent to it, works out to about a dollar ninety-three a week. If I remember right. Had a lot of questions about the activity on Market Street. We talked about that in committee. That is that sewer repair work that we're doing. And that relates to the project to really put an enduring, lasting bit of pavement on Market. Market's incredibly wide. And believe it or not, we tried to dig up all the stuff we need to dig up before you put new pavement in. So that's why we did the full-depth repair and you've seen us do the sewer repair. And that's why, you know, you have those new handicap ADA brands at each of the intersections along there because that's partially a money, a project federal money, and you have to do that, which we're happy to do that. We got good numbers on paving back on the bid. And really would like to thank Cox Paving and Fillmore for bidding. That makes for us a nice competitive bidding process with two local companies that we are both very comfortable with and very proud to do business with. A fun item, we've had a huge amount of fun with it. If you haven't been out in the evening and you go down Court Street, you will see that we are themed for St. Patrick's Day. And actually, those bulbs, we can change the colors in them so you can theme them for every holiday or, you know, like Fourth of July can have red, white, blue. But we've had tremendous fun with that. It was relatively inexpensive project, really. And there's some other things along with the larger downtown issues that, you know, we'll pursue this year concerning directional signage and all different places to sit down that we were pursuing downtown along with the bigger ticket items. The lights, really want to thank Shannon Sword and Caleb Baumann from the Service Department. They're the folks that have done that. And it's been a bit more than change the light bulb. They have to do a little bit of work when they do that with those. They're relatively inexpensive. We'll see how long they last. But they're relatively easy to change and it's something that we've had a great deal of fun with, actually. Would like to thank Tony Pennwell from Tony's Welding. We've been working with him on a number of issues. And there you have a local business person who is truly dedicated to the community and that we are very happy to see where we can make improvements for the benefit of everybody. Tree Committee with that grant has been busy at work. It's been a tremendous amount of work for them. Alister, our state forester for our area from O D N R, has been of tremendous assistance. And in cooperation with O D N R, we've, they use the fire department for some of their, they call it Tree Academy training for our area. That's worked out very well for them and we are happy to be able to assist them in that way. And it has been a lovely cooperative relationship. We talked about street sweepers are out this time of year, which means that snow is gone. And we talked about we moved the last of the great pile of the north down at the park. All got all piled up there. And yes, when you move that around and it melts, you end up with a tremendous amount of trash and dirt that you've also moved when you've moved the snow. Another sign of spring is Gary talking about lawn mowers. Probably the most important one for me is I've been to Dairy Queen since it has reopened and it got the Heath Blizzard. So, well, it's pretty good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Mr. Sockman is not here. He makes his report next meeting. But Mr. Pittsick is here. Do you have a report?
Briefly, I would like to let everyone know that the highway patrol has been making additional arrests on our interstates. They have a program now that they want to reduce people who are going over eighty-five mile an hour. So, by six percent across the state of Ohio. So, we're seeing a big increase in speeding tickets coming into the court. The court is handling the additional citations as well, I think we're moving through. The other thing I would say is the court is also has show cause hearings on Friday. And last, I think a week ago, they had a hundred and thirty to forty people that showed up because they hadn't paid their fines and costs. So, the court is bringing them back to explain why they haven't paid their fines and costs. I think that's well-deserved and we'll see how that works out. So, that's all I have. Great.
I also saw the paper tonight that the seatbelt violations, that a whole two columns, there's nothing but seatbelt. So, they must be cracking down at the same time.
Same time.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Pittsick. Kelly, my dear, we have a clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before counsel is a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new C two liquor license to be issued to Dogan Midwest L L C doing business as Dollar General Store two, I'm sorry, two zero four seven, located in eighteen twenty-one Columbus Avenue, Washington courthouse, Ohio. What is before you is the only documents that were received by the administration office and the police department. Chief and area advice background text cannot be completed, but does not have any objections to this. Does counsel have any objections to the request?
I do. And I move that we have a hearing concerning this request. I'll second the motion. The discussion. Just a question, what is C two?
Yeah, when we looked it up, it was wine and prepackaged.
Yes, prepackaged.
It seemed to be like, not beer, but prepackaged.
Like dollar wine?
Yes. Yeah.
That's what you'd expect. Would you expect a dollar for the Dollar General?
Yeah, I doubt if you're going to find any, any fine vintage wine in there that-
Is, I assume since it's Dollar General, it's just a different company is now controlling those or?
It just says Dogan Midwest L L C.
Yeah.
Doing business with.
Okay, well, we have anything else? We have a motion and a second. Kelly, you want to call? Roll, please.
Yes, sir. Johnson?
No.
Schultz?
No.
Blair?
No. If you vote no, what are, what are we doing?
Vote no, you don't want to have a hearing.
You don't want?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Hawke?
No.
Christman?
No.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
No. We had no local residents taxpayers sign up, but a couple came in late. If anybody wants to speak, I would let you even though you didn't sign up.
Brooke, you won't say anything? All I do is, we should have never asked her.
Well, she came in after we had already taken the paper out. If you would say your name and address and then you can say whatever.
Hi, I am Brooke Duel from the famous forty-one Rotling Street here in town. I recently, I really just wanted to introduce myself. This is my first council meeting. I took up presidency on Main Street. So, we've had two meetings so far this year and I'll be working on more. Just want to put that out there. I've already worked with Joe a little bit, so I have to be careful.
That's okay.
You did good, rookie.
We regret your grandpa, but you're stuck with him, so there you go. I'm sure you hear more jokes than we do.
And that's unfortunate for you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to ask Brooke, I saw where you shared your first event that's happening after you like to share that with everybody.
Yeah, let us, let us know about anything you had coming.
Okay, so we officially planned our first event called Sit and Thrift.
On the line.
Sit and Thrift. So, us board members, we're gathering like new or gently-used clothes and knickknacks and kids' toys. And we're going to be setting up along the sidewalks downtown. Let me see, it is April twelfth. That's when we'll be doing that. So, you can get either a tea from New Moon or a drink from Salty Broad's patio. Go around and shop for thrifted items and everything's a dollar. That's our first event of the year. And then we have an egg hunt coming up, which I'll actually need help reserving the courthouse lawn for. Egg hunt is scheduled for April nineteenth. So, we're, we're having kids, baby to twelve, hunt at the courthouse lawn. We're going to provide the eggs and candy. We're doing that. Yeah. Two official events.
So, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you put out real eggs for an Easter egg hunt, you'd have a lot of people there.
Yeah, real eggs. You can put out one dozen, that's it. Piece of gold you'd be putting out.
Sure. Okay, well, thank you. Good to have you here. You can come back in. All right. Legislation is what we're up to now. Legislation previously introduced. We have several things to adopt and pass tonight. First is ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, third reading.
I knew that we placed ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, on third reading.
Second.
Discussion.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number one dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance accepting annexation on application of owners and establishing original zoning districts of eighty-five point six six nine acres.
Move for passage. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Ordinance number two, twenty twenty-five, third reading.
I will move to ordinance number two, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance to amend chapter one-ten of the city income tax code to comply with House Bill thirty-three changes.
I'll move for adoption.
I'll second. Pass it.
Okay, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution number R ten, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
Place resolution number R ten, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
Second.
Was that Ted? Okay, we'll give it to Ted here. Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R ten dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington courthouse, appointment of Mr. Ron Sockman to the Fayette County Travel and Tourism Board to fulfill an expired term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Move for adoption.
Passage second.
That's the adoption.
I'm sorry, it is resolved.
It's okay.
That's all right.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
I think it took me most of a year when I came on council before I figured out which was which, passing and resolving.
Adoption.
And until somebody told me so, anyway. Resolution number R eleven, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I will move to resolution R eleven, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R eleven dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Keith Echols to the City Planning Commission of the City of Washington courthouse for a term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I'll move for adoption.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution number R twelve, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twelve, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twelve dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Kirk Wilson to the Historic District Review Board of the City of Washington courthouse for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirteen, twenty twenty five, second reading.
I move that we place resolution number R thirteen, twenty twenty five, on second reading.
Second.
Okay, you and Ted are thinking you like this.
We are.
That could be dangerous.
Uh, where are we? Oh, discussion?
Yep.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirteen dash two thousand and twenty five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Dennen, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Scott Dahlmeier to the Historic District Review Board of the City of Washington Courthouse for a term concluding December thirty first, two thousand and twenty nine.
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
I have the opportunity to attend a lot of those meetings, and I just, again, say thanks to citizens who are willing to serve on those committees, it's important work, they're, the people are really qualified, you can tell, they've studied the information that they get about different things, whether it's planning or zoning or historic district, and I sit there and just go through a while, I've really thought things over and thought about them, and so I appreciate those people doing that. I don't think they get much in return, I sometimes yell at, but other than that, I don't know. Anyway, uh, resolution number R fourteen, twenty twenty five, second reading.
I'll move that we put resolution R fourteen, twenty twenty five, on second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question about, is, is the city liable for any of this money wise to pay for, what is this loan fund for this revolving loan account?
Uh, that would provide funding for you to commence the design process of a new water plant, and then several years down the road, once you got that all done, it would get rolled over, uh, into a revolving loan, uh, for, uh, whatever plant improvements, new plant that, that you construct.
Kind of like the sewer plant?
Exactly, like sewer plant.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's that they, they got one for wastewater, one for water. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jim, thanks. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fourteen dash two thousand and twenty five, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dennen, City Manager or his designee, to apply for, accept and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, W P C L F, or water supply revolving loan fund, W S R L A, agreement on behalf of the City of Washington Courthouse for planning, design and construction of the wastewater or water facilities and designation of a dedicated repayment source for the list.
I'll move for adoption on that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Last but previously introduced is resolution number R fifteen, twenty twenty five, second reading.
I'll move that we put resolution R fifteen, twenty twenty five, on second reading.
Second.
You got it.
Ted. Uh, discussion.
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, okay.
This is Leesburg Avenue, correct?
Yes, that would include that, yeah.
You know, I, of course, I live right around the corner on Leesburg, and it's already a traffic nightmare, and I'm afraid slowing it down even though it's a great deal of backlog of cars. This is fine, I'm just not concerned about that.
ODOT will do the traffic study now, you know, you've had requests about the, the traffic, the, the noise issue there, there is no pre-shadowing about what they will conclude. Uh, there's a design and engineering process that they will go through to determine what the appropriate speed limit is, uh, and then what should help with the flow of traffic tremendously throughout town, Columbus and Delaware is a good example, you know, you used to have, that people complained about that all the time, and then we changed that over to the newer, uh, highest tech traffic sensing equipment that you could have, and it works incredibly well. The only downside of that is that it's twenty thousand dollars for that little intersection. Uh, five points, you know, there's that ODOT grant that we got that will help you with traffic regulations throughout the whole of the community, and that will, I think, make a tremendous difference there, and now that is, ODOT's on the fiscal year or on county year, twenty-six or twenty-seven, Jim, I can't remember.
Joe, has District Six, are they still a bit, still hot and heavy on one-way streets like they used to be?
If you have a traffic engineer look at traffic movement in that area, they will probably tell you the one-way street thing is something you want to think about, and I, it doesn't make any difference if they're an ODOT traffic engineer or any traffic engineer, I almost posit tell you that.
As I recall, the first time I was chairperson was almost thirty years ago, and Eddie Kirk and all merchants through town didn't want one-way, so District Six wanted to try to go one-way, and I said, if that's all you guys do, you go back to Delaware, we're gonna need to hear it.
Okay, but I mean, any traffic engineer you would talk to would, would tell you, you need to look at that. Now, ODOT decides the speed limit on a state route, the, the one-way street thing, we would have to consider that, but that wherever it is.
Thank you. Joe, would they do the same thing on Clinton Avenue?
Yes.
So they're looking at Clinton and Leesburg Avenue on thirteen twenty five?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Um, we did find out, Jim, earlier, if they go over eighty-five, they're gonna be fined.
So they go, they go past your house at eighty-five, get the police to call with you.
That's what the chief told us earlier, they're looking out for people driving eighty-five.
With no seatbelt, driving eighty-five on no seatbelt.
I don't know where we, oh, I know, roll call.
Yes, Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Uh, what am I doing?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
No.
Lynch?
Uh, yes.
Resolution number R fifteen dash two thousand and twenty five, a resolution requesting and supporting District Six of the Ohio Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic study for the purpose of reducing the speed limit from thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour.
Move for adoption. I'll go ahead, Sylvia.
Sorry. I'll second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
No.
Lynch?
Yes.
And we have two legislations that are new, and the first one, I believe, is ordinance number three, twenty twenty five, first reading.
Well, I'll move that we put ordinance number three, twenty twenty five, on second reading.
And discussion.
So, if I may.
Yes, you may, it's discussion.
There's a, there's a few people here who are newer or who aren't our regulars, such as Kester Keys in the back. I'm sure that Kester Keys are all about this, but for the ones who are not as new, or who are newer, um, you know, I would just like to talk about this a little bit because this is going to come up, probably in the news and everything else, it affects people locally. Uh, it, it is a new tax, I'm gonna say that, it is a new tax, but it's replacing a tax that expires, and it's at the same rate, it's for different things. We've crafted this particular tax so that we can fully fund our Parks Department, which I'm really proud of. Um, you know, we talk about all the different departments in the city, and we're all very proud of funding fully our police and our fire and all these other wonderful departments, and often parks end up getting the short end of the stick, and, you know, over time, because they're more one-time costs, there's not a lot of employees in the park, because there are a lot of one-time costs, sometimes those projects are pushed back and pushed back, and so I view this as an opportunity to catch up on our promise to provide nice parks due to the citizens and residents who are here in Fayette County and Washington Courthouse, and even the surrounding areas who come and visit, maybe during the daytime, whenever they're out of break from work, uh, or if they're coming and enjoying some shopping, uh, while they're visiting our county, maybe they can go visit a park too. So, I, I look at it as an opportunity, it is a new tax, I'm not gonna lie to people, we've had a lot of discussion about this before, and, uh, you know, I don't want to deceive anyone in any way, it is, it is new, but it doesn't increase your current tax level, I just wanna let you know that, we're replacing one brick with another, we're not building up your taxes, we're not tearing down your taxes, we're just making sure that they're going towards the right things and for the right reasons, so, thank you.
And I'll add to that, and also, it's, the folks in the city are already paying this anyway, they're already, it's two tenths of a percent, they're already paying it, so it's nothing new, not adding any more, we're already paying, and it also will cover a lot more than, Caleb covered a lot right there, alleyways, possibly, some alleyways and some maintenance on the buildings, new roofs and things on the Police Department and Fire Department, so it is very good to cover a lot of things the city needs, the money's for, so it, uh, I would like everybody to kind of look at that and think about it, and like I said, it's nothing new, we're already paying it, it's already there, we're not adding any more to it, so.
Anything else? Roll call.
Sorry. Johnson?
I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's okay, I'm so sorry. Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Well, I had a question, I was speaking with Mr. Johnson here, on, uh, second, second page there, number four, I just happened to pick up, says on or after January the first two thousand sixteen, an additional twenty-five percent on income tax for the purpose of maintaining and so forth and so on, is that an additional tax?
No, that's giving a history.
A history?
History of taxes, how they've been in the past.
It was two thousand sixteen.
So, so, so the number four portion is a different tax, not the tax that is expiring that we are replacing?
No, it just lays out the history of
Yes.
what the current tax rates are and what they're used for, that's the purpose, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, what's, what's being charged.
One point nine five.
It's always been that one.
Okay.
Been that way, yes.
Kelly knows, I know.
Yeah, I'm, I, I would say Mr. Blair, but I don't believe that you.
He said yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um, Paul?
Yes.
Christmas?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number three dash two thousand and twenty five, an ordinance to amend section one ten point zero one of the codified ordinances of the City of Washington Courthouse, Ohio, in order to increase the income tax rate by two tenths percent, beginning January first two thousand and twenty six and continuing for a period of ten years to maintain the current overall income tax rate on one and ninety-five one hundredths of a percent, which beginning January first two thousand twenty six will be reduced by two tenths percent due to the expiration of ordinance number one dash two thousand and seven for the purpose of capital improvements being parks, streets, alleys, bike paths and maintenance on buildings and infrastructure.
Yeah, I can see people reading down to increase the income tax rate by two tenths and not read anything else, and they'll think it's a new tax. Anyway.
We're gonna explain that over and over.
Last one today is resolution number R sixteen, I believe, twenty twenty five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R sixteen, twenty twenty five, on first reading.
Second.
Um, discussion. Roll call.
Oh, we might, sorry for the delay there, I was just thinking, I've already spoken with Mark Pitchnick about this, it looks like this will be on the August special election.
We're going to try to get it on the August special, that's correct.
Okay. Because there is one in May, but nobody knows what's gonna be on it.
We have no clue.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair? Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R-sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend section one-ten point zero-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Washington courthouse, Ohio, in order to increase the income tax rate by two-tenths percent, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-six, and continuing for a period of ten years for the purpose of capital improvements being parks, streets, alleys, bike paths, and maintenance on buildings and infrastructure, infrastructure.
Okay, very good. Mr. Schultz, what do you have this evening?
Well, okay, that, really, I don't, I never really get a close, he never calls on me first. Yeah, I was talking to him. He gets me a second to think about it, so. But, yeah, I, I guess I don't have anything, but everybody enjoys the nice weather. I'm using my powers, not words, but you did. You just did, thank you.
I'm tricky.
You tricked me.
Sylvia, you're up.
I got it. I don't have any fun jokes or puns. I don't, I'm not very good at the dad jokes, I'm sorry. Um.
He isn't either. But go ahead.
Keep trying.
That's fair. Um, my kiddos have been home on spring break this week, so that's been fun, and we've been revisiting some of our favorite books and fairy tales. So I haven't done a quote in a while, but we've revisited one of our all-time favorites that we've read and reread and reread again. Um, but it is The Hobbit by Tolkien, and my favorite, favorite quote in the whole thing, and we've got it hanging in our house and in our little free library, he says, "It is the small, everyday deeds of ordinary folk that keep the darkness at bay, small acts of kindness and love." And I think if we just continue in that vein within the community and build in our small little space and do things to try to improve the world where we are, that's really what it's all about. So that's been kind of my takeaway this week, with my little windows open, microwaving strawberries, doing all kinds of things while I'm working from home. Um, but we take fun breaks and go out to the backyard and read The Hobbit to the chickens, which has been kind of fun. They, they like to hear it. They like stories. So. So that's my little spiel.
Uh, and everybody that made fun of your chickens, how did you have all the eggs you want? Nobody else does.
Right.
We got all the gold and we don't.
I know, I know.
Mr. Blair, what do you have?
Well, the good weather has brought out the people on the outside. Shai and I walk through the cemetery, of course, on a regular basis when we can.
Ready for people out there.
And there's a lot of people playing disc golf, and, uh, believe this or not, yesterday, there was somebody swimming in the creek.
Oh, no.
Yes.
Surely this didn't fall and you walked past.
He's playing disc golf, and the disc went in the creek. And when it, he, first of all, he stripped down to his skivvies.
Oh, my God.
If that's preventable. But, uh, anyway, yes, he went in and got the, the disc.
So has the water cold you?
I don't know. Hey, your time's up. And also, I saw people playing pickleball in the park, so we're already, uh, getting people involved and, uh. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Quite good. Okay, well, Mr. Hawk.
What's up? Read what you said. I agree with it, but I don't remember what it was, but anyway.
Do you want me to read it again? Do you want to read it? You can read it. It's your turn.
Well, there is, that's what you said.
Oh, you got it.
I don't know who this hobbit guy is.
You don't like Tolkien? Ted, I thought we were friends. I'm concerned.
Mr. Blair, um, you might want to tell your fellow frisbee guys.
Frisbee guys, frisbee guys.
The outlet from the sewer plant is just above that course, so.
Well, they were back this, where they had that branch that comes into the creek.
Oh, okay.
So that's pure crystal clear water.
Yeah, that's.
Well, what comes out of, what comes out of sewer plant, we do such a good job with that anyway. It probably improves the water. And I think that's all I have.
I don't even know what I'm gonna write.
Mr. Johnson.
I'll convince you now that you can bottle that water and then go bring it white out. Both ways, you need that sewer plant. Well, I, uh, you know, I own a downtown business, and we have window displays. And, uh, mine are Christmasy, and I was going to change mine last weekend. When I go and I show up, there was a post-it note on my door. It said, "Exmas is over." And I thought, well, that's not very Christmasy. So I kept it up another week. So I'll, I'll have it changed this weekend, but, you know, just want to let everyone know it's, it's gonna be changed.
I'm gonna change it the following week.
I didn't leave the note the other day. I was sending a truck line like, okay, we've still got this Christmas stuff in the luggage.
Yeah.
You were the one with the note on it.
I promised you I didn't do the note.
Us attorneys aren't very busy. I don't know what I've been doing, but. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Christman.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Remember to come back. Good to see you again, Bob. My mind, yeah, my mind just went blank. Old days, old days is a terrible thing. I'd also like to thank the young lady in the corner that came and tell her that I'm really surprised. I'm glad that she grew up normal after what she drank.
Who said she was normal?
She appears to be normal so far.
So far.
Anyway, thanks everybody for coming. Good seeing you. That's all I have.
Did you ever get to cover city council meetings when?
They weren't even like this.
I'm sure they were.
It wasn't like this.
You didn't hear?
Those guys on TV on Columbus City Council, they're stuck, stuck, sure.
The city needs to relax.
Yeah.
Mr. Pitchnick, what do we need to do to remove miscellaneous from the agenda?
Yes. Just vote it out.